Yeah.
God.
For us.
Wait, you have to.
Yeah.
And the worst of two.
Another one's next week.
One day, I can't imagine waking up and saying this.
I'd like to see them clearly that I do, but it'll work out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just be careful on that one.
That's great.
It's really great.
Well, I just don't want people to report.
I always wanted to do this.
I didn't.
What did you do?
I'm all about responsibility.
Marilyn, you might want to turn off your mic.
Commercial. That came at the last minute. It's a cataract from where I started. And then they threw that in.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the February twenty-sixth City Council Work Session. I'm Councilor Marilyn Smith, standing in for Mayor Johnson, who is testifying at the Legislature this afternoon. I would like to, I'm calling the meeting to order at four P M. And can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Johnson the second, Dean Mayor Marilyn Smith.
Here.
Councilors Newton.
Present.
Novak.
Montague.
Here.
Kobsensky.
Here.
And McGee.
Present.
Five councilors present.
Thank you. Is there any business from the public today? No. All right. We will move into our scheduled business, our mid-period strategic plan review.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Smith, and thank you all for entertaining our less formal table setup today. So we wanted to try to encourage work at the work session and hopefully help stimulate you all to have a good conversation about the strategic plan. So I have a short PowerPoint presentation. Hopefully, you can all see various monitors, and then we'll get right into it. Okay, so I want to start by talking about the strategic planning cycle. In November of two thousand and twenty-one, the development of the current strategic plan began. You probably remember some workshops and questionnaires and things that you all went through. And then in February twenty-two, the council met. We had a consultant and helped us through the process. At that time, the four overarching themes were renewed. And we, the council identified some new goals and objectives and carried on some of the existing goals and objectives. And then staff began doing surveys and in-person events to share the strategic plan. In September, the plan was officially adopted. So the strategic plan that we're currently working under is the twenty-two through twenty-six strategic plan. Over the last year, all of the departments developed operational plans, the ones that didn't have those already. And it took the goals and objectives that were identified into the strategic plan and each department came up with their own plan of how to implement those that applied to them. And in particular, focusing on the next two years or to try to develop departmental action plans and their own key performance indicators. We still have work to do on that, but it was a real crucial step at trying to take the strategic plan from this thing that sort of appeared and really put it into action across all of the departments. Then last fall, we did our first annual report, provided that to the council. And hopefully, you've had a chance to look over that again because there might be some things in there that trigger some discussion today. And here's where we are. So every two years, the council is going to review the strategic plan and identify gaps in service or new opportunities that we might be able to add to the existing strategic plan or further refine it. And this is the point in time that we're at right now. And then every four years, in this case, the spring of two thousand and twenty-six, we're going to do a comprehensive review and revision of the strategic plan. So that's when we'll essentially do what we did in two thousand and twenty-two. Sit down and look at all of the goals and objectives, the four themes, make sure the council still agrees with all of that. And if you'd like to suggest any changes to the goals and objectives, that's the time when those will come in. So over here behind Councilor McGee is a gigantic timeline that Matt Harrington made to sort of show this process. So the strategic plan is at the top for you all to see. And we're at the, just after December two thousand and twenty-three, that's us, we're doing the review. So we're at the left-hand side of that timeline. Thank you. Thank you, Vanna. So the goal of today's meeting is to conduct the review of the strategic plan and review the progress that we've made on the strategic plan to date. We're going to look at the goals and objectives and maybe identify any edits or small changes that might need to be made. This is really about fine-tuning the existing plan, not reworking the entire plan. That is what will happen in two thousand and twenty-six. But if you have thoughts on additions, removals, or new initiatives or major changes to what's in the plan, you can bring those up. We'll note those, and we will put those in a parking lot for the large revision effort that will happen in two thousand and twenty-six. So next, I want to talk a little bit about the difference and the relationship between strategic planning and budgeting. So, and that's also on this timeline. So the blue lines at the top are the strategic plan. The green lines at the bottom are the budget. And so budgeting here in Albany is on a two-year basis, used to be on an annual basis. And the budget timeline and the strategic plan timeline are staggered, and they are intentionally staggered. So a budget is, needs to be on a shorter timeline so that it can be flexible and adaptable because economic conditions change and the environment changes both inside and outside of the city, and we need to be able to respond to that. So the budget is intentionally short. We need to have some flexibility so we can make sure we can deliver the services that are asked of us in a fiscally responsible way. The strategic plan is on a five-year cycle. And that's more appropriate because the strategic plan is trying to get us to our vision. We're trying to get to the vision of the city, and that's a long-term process. So the strategic plan, at any given time, we're only implementing portions of it because you can't eat the whole elephant at once, right? So we're assigning, we're developing goals and objectives, and as we accomplish those, we'll develop more every five years. And that's what that process is about. It may take multiple iterations of a strategic plan before a goal fully comes out of the plan because it just might take ten or twelve or how many years to accomplish a large goal that the council wants us to get to, to help move the city along. So hopefully, that visually helps provide some clarification about how the strategic plan is going to extend past the current budget and halfway through the next biennial budget. And we're building our budgets to implement the strategic plan. We're not doing it the other way around, right? The strategic plan doesn't implement what's in the budget. It's the other way around. So the way it should work is it filters down. We look at the goals and objectives as departments, and we say, we're ready to start work on this objective. And here's the action items in this two-year budget cycle that we're going to budget for. And then we work on those. And then, once we accomplish that objective, it can come out of the plan. That objectives may also take multiple budget cycles. So it's just trying to translate a long-term vision into the actual work that we're doing. And that's, the translation there are the departmental plans. So does that help? Is everybody kind of getting how it should flow?
What you're describing is that when things are accomplished, that's what the annual report is. That's the manifestation and the compilation of all those things that have been done.
Right. And we can talk about, there's one objective that can come out of the strategic plan now that we've accomplished, which I'll point out later. And those sorts of things we want to talk about at this meeting. Or small edits, which I have, we have some examples that we've found as we've gone through this process last year. You might also have examples of like, subjective seems a little bit awkward and funky or, you know, should be reworded in a certain way. So what's going to come out of this meeting is an addendum to the strategic plan. We're going to take all of these fine-tuned notes, and we're going to create an addendum. It will go onto the strategic plan and onto the website. And then the other thing, which will probably not be posted anywhere, is going to be this parking lot of whatever issues you have that are, might be large, larger. Like, you know, this goal is not a good goal. It needs to be, you know, modified in this way. Or we're never going to make progress to this strategic plan theme unless we add this other goal that I want to add. That sort of stuff is going to have to be saved for the two thousand and twenty-six revision.
Yeah. When you mentioned, that is twelve, twelve items or items that you were going to bring up? Are those set by previous council or are those suggestions from staff?
I don't know, twelve items. We, what we have.
The goals, yeah, the goals and what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, the strategic plan themes, you know, great neighborhoods, safe city, there's four of them. Those were set by council and reaffirmed in the last strategic planning process. What we have to do is, at this point, an opportunity for the council to say, you know, in your deep review of the strategic plan or reviewing of the annual report, something that you've noticed that you feel like needs to be edited, tweaked. You don't understand why it's there, how it relates, those sorts of things. Staff has identified four specific objectives that we're happy to share with you to kick off ideas if you need it, or we can, I can stop talking here and you can pepper me with your thoughts.
Okay, just some random thoughts, I guess. I liken everything that's happening, the work you put into it is phenomenal. Kudos, high kudos for you and the team doing that. It's kind of like a stew. Things are bubbling up all the time. And all of a sudden, because of, out of necessity, maybe emergency or whatever, rise to the top, which override other things. At what point do those, oh, a couple, a couple of points. At what point do those then get pushed out of necessity into the action plans for the strategic plan and get onto the strategic plan? And years ago, we would get almost semi-annually a report. These were the metrics that we went on, were going on every year. How are we doing by that? And I'm not seeing how that is showing up as a tangible thing to look at or modify or note.
Okay, so how do things bubble up to become action items? I think this is your first question. And I think there's a couple of ways. Number one, it, sometimes things just become ripe. Like, you know, we're losing, we're having a lot of retirements, this is probably a few years ago, maybe, but we're having a lot of retirements. We need to really develop an internal succession plan or something like that. A department might get to that point. Another way that happens is through feedback from the council. So if at this point you say, like, I don't feel like we're making enough progress on goal two of Safe City, and tell me what you're doing there, and what we tell you is insufficient in the council's mind, then that, you make that a priority for us.
Well, and I think one of the things that just jumped to my mind is, you know, the residential streets, all of a sudden, it just is, okay, here we are. So now we're really trying to work through that.
Right. And that's a goal in the plan. You know, some of it is, I can't speak for all the departments, so I'll just speak for mine. But the transportation funding, it's, has, it's not like it hasn't been a need to discuss with the council. We need to have the capacity as a department to work on that project. It's a big project. So some other things have to get done, and then we can say, we're going to have time for this now. It also happens, and they can tell you, the people that work for me, that I just say, we're doing this. Like, you know, we're going to have to figure it out, and this is going to become our priority. And then that, that's miserable. It's a miserable place to be for all of us. But, you know, those sorts of things can happen where it's like, we just, we have to work on this now. This is the time. Another thing that happens, and the other thing to keep in mind is that the strategic plan does not have all of the work that the city is doing. Like, there's so much more that's happening than what's in here. And so part of that balance, as a director, is, you know, I also have all of this other stuff. I mean, it's generally in here because it says something like, comply with regulations in here. So like, have all this work that the department does to do that. It's not itemized in here and detailed on what we're doing. We have to, like, get that done and have time to do these other things. So that's part of the balance, I think, all of us go through. What was your other question? Oh, metrics. Yes. So that's kind of where this all started, as we wanted to report metrics. And then we realized we didn't have the supporting planning work underneath it for all of the departments. So it varies a little bit. But key performance indicators, we used to do the ICMA reporting, which is, I think, what you're referring to. So ICMA, International City and County Managers Association. It's sort of the industry group for local government. And they have a standard where you can be, you can achieve certain, you know, praise levels, I don't know what they're called, if you do certain levels of reporting and work. And for a long time, we, we did that, and we had this huge table of metrics. And Councilor Smith is.
I rolled my eyes. I apologize.
It was, it is, it still exists. It's a huge table of metrics, many of which have really no application to us here in Albany. And so it was just busy work. You know, twice a year, we would be asked to fill in, you know, number of hours per pothole field or whatever the metric was, and it was just like, ugh. So we have gotten away from that a little bit. Now, there are some things in there that are very good and valuable. And we have discussed internally how to pick that tool back up and make it work better for us. And that's probably, over the next year, one of the steps that's going to happen. And should have reiterated this at the beginning. This is the first time we've done this. This is the first time we've done a lot of these things. So if this is terrible, please provide your feedback afterwards. But one of the things we need to do is figure out a way to come up with a meaningful way to identify and track and report on key performance indicators that is not creating low-value work for our departments because that's kind of what that system used to do. As a person who had to go track down some silly metric, it did, identifying that metric did not do anything to make the department or the city a better organization. So we will, I think, over the next year, have that system figured out a little bit better and be able to report to you on with real metrics that we can track over time. But developing that is also another set of work.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
I would say that a lot of, notwithstanding what Chris said and all of that, we're marching down that path. But a lot of this review has been, of this strategic plan, has been done in this annual report. So it's kind of there for you, and I hope you all have had a chance to look at it and go through it and see how it compares to strategic, strategic plan themes, goals, objectives that it reports on. We do need to add KPIs to that at some point, and that's where we're headed.
So what I think you're hearing is saying is that this isn't necessarily for, like, your daily work. This is more for our strategy to set us up for our future growth and just the future of the city in general.
Right. Yes.
Thank you. And today, we are focusing on goals and objectives. And is that still, just a review of that to make sure it's still valid and that there doesn't need to be any, you know, edits done to that? We are not focused on the accomplishments that's during the annual review. Is that correct?
Can I suggest that we, we do the four examples that you identified? And that will give you all an idea of what it should look like.
So I guess my main question is, we're not focusing on accomplishments today, though, right?
No, we're not, we're not rehashing the annual report.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll just do the first one. And does any, we have a few copies of the strategic plan and annual report, or you can pull it up on the city's website if you're interested. Mary has some copies. We only printed a few because we, we knew you all would be prepared. Okay. I have an annual report if anyone needs one. Mary has.
I'm just of the paperless office portion of effective government.
Yes, we're trying to. It is available on, on the website.
I appreciate hard copy.
Do you need a copy of the strategic plan?
I probably have one somewhere, but since you made extra copies, I'll make sure it doesn't go too.
Yeah, I'll put it at the counter.
Okay, I will, I will not write on it. I will just refer to it. Thank you. I'm sure I have.
Okay. I'm sure you do, too. So, so this is one of the objectives that we noted as we went through. It's on the screen. So this is great neighborhoods, is my abbreviation, goal two, objective three. So let me find it. It's at the beginning. Right. So great neighborhoods, goal two.
Oh, strategic.
In the strategic plan, yep. Objective three is ensure that public facilities, services, sidewalks, and public transportation are ADA accessible. That's a great objective. We are working on that objective. However, the challenge is that I, that we see, I see, I probably identified this, is that this objective appears under provide an efficient transportation system. So one might assume that we're only concerned about ADA facilities as it relates, as they relate to the transportation system. We really should be concerned about ADA facilities and services.
Period.
Across the city. Right. So this is a fine objective. It's just maybe not in the right place. So my suggestion is that the council discuss that and note in the addendum that in the revision process, we're going to figure out where to put ADA accessibility goals and objectives because we do need to have them. It's definitely a good thing to have. Probably doesn't belong under the transportation goal. Probably needs to be in effective government or somewhere like that where it can be more broadly applied to the city.
It's also important to note that just because you make that note in the addendum doesn't mean that the Parks Department is not working on ADA accessibility right now or that Matt Harrington's not, Harrington's not working on it with Communications right now. It's, all of that stuff is happening. We just are going to table it until twenty-six to.
Right. It's just not being described very well by being chunked underneath transportation. There's, I mean, probably the transportation and the right-of-way network is the largest by number individual accessibility improvements that need to be made. If you think about places where there need to be sidewalks and there aren't sidewalks, places where there need to be modern curb ramps that don't have them. So there's just thousands of them that we've identified in our self-evaluation and transition plan for the right-of-way system. But there are also other things that the city needs to work on for ADA that are not related to transportation. So this is the sort of scale of comment that we're hoping for. Is like, this is fine, but it's not really exactly where it needs to be. Or maybe it needs to be further described.
Let's go to your next one.
Okay. The next one is same, great neighborhoods, this time under a goal three. So goal three says, provide effective stewardship of Albany's significant natural culture and historic resources. There's only one objective under goal three, and it talks about natural resources specifically. Now, we clearly are doing things with our historic and cultural resources as a city, but there's nothing here. And so the suggestion here is to have the council discuss, make a note that in the two thousand and twenty-six revision, we want the council to specifically discuss the implementing objectives under this goal because it doesn't seem like we've got enough. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I agree.
I think we have some of those objectives in other places in the plan.
Okay. Okay.
Need to be ferreted out.
Okay.
Where would they be?
I'm thinking of the role that the Human Relations Commission plays, historical resources, and in, where would they be? Where would we deal with? Historical resources in plan?
It's, it's in great neighborhoods, I'm pretty sure.
Well, the next goal has a line about increase the number of cultural events. And so this is something I know the library reports on specifically. But doesn't really talk about stewardship of cultural resources, you know? So it's kind of just a little bit.
Needs to be fleshed out.
Yep. And that would sort of be the note is, maybe the council in two thousand and twenty-six wants to discuss this goal a little more because staff doesn't really feel like the objectives are fully, are kind of robust enough.
Four more years, all sorts of things. We have changed.
It's true. Yeah.
This might be my thing.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, things change, so. Any other thoughts on that one?
Good catch.
Well, thank you. That's all I'll say about that. You'll notice mine is a little marked up. My paper is very soft because it's been handled a lot. Okay, the next one is under Safe City, and this kind of is something that happened. It's sort of like when your good friend has a great idea and you just sort of borrow it from them. That's what needs to happen for a couple of these goals. So we'll just thank the fire department. So this is Safe City's goal one, and if you count down the fifth objective, one, two, three, four, five, it says, plan for equipment replacement and facilities maintenance to adequately address emergency equipment and vehicle needs and long-term maintenance of department facilities. So this is all about, you know, effectively managing their assets and facilities, vehicles, et cetera. Oh, that sounds like something we should all do. And so then, if you go to effective government, a few pages later, goal one, objective three, says, develop and maintain plans for the management and replacement of public works' assets and core infrastructure. So fire and public works carry on their assets, but clearly, no one else does. No, that's not the case, obviously. So what we think needs to happen is this goal under effective government probably needs to be modified so it's not public work-centric, right? We need to manage all of our assets, whether it's, you know, library assets, parks, general city like this building. Need to, and this is just sort of like, I think it just reflects that this, the, the way this plan was developed, we got input from individual departments on things. And there wasn't this sort of like, how do we make it all work all together? So there's a little, a few things that are sort of chunked.
By the, by the same token, what you're doing, what you may be doing is prioritizing within that larger group. They're listed there, but you can still prioritize, you know, public safety or whatever.
Right. It could be that we have both objectives because for a safe city, you need to make sure that, that police and fire. Because for a safe city, you need to make sure that police and fire are effectively managing their assets. So maybe it's great to have that objective under that theme. And under effective government, we can come up with another way. It's also possible that in four years, there's going to be some public works disasters that would have been resolved if somebody had been doing asset management better. So maybe that gets called out. You know, specifically want public works to get their act together and manage their assets better. So it's possible that it could be a general and then a very specific.
Well, it can be tied together tangentially with having a reserve account, reserves built to allow for something that's going to happen.
Yeah. Okay. Did you get all that, Mary? Mary's taking notes.
There may be, there may be work that we can do on format too. Because if you follow the trend here in the last two things, if you accept that many of these things apply to the whole city, pretty soon you'll have the theme effective government be huge, and all the other ones will be three little small ones. So maybe there's a way we can matrix them and show that they appear in different places so that you avoid that tendency to lump everything under effective government.
It might, it might be that we get there and we're like, effective government isn't, maybe the four themes need to be reevaluated next time. And some, some cities jurisdictions do strategic planning sort of, I mean, they, a lot of people have a very similar, like, here's our broad theme. And then, but, but items are organized by sort of functional things. So like personnel, you know, or, or, or human capital. And there'll be specific things under there about training and recruitment and succession and all those things. Or there'll be one sort of functional area about assets. Might have specific goals and objectives related just to assets in this area. So we could, it might be something to work on as well. It's like, how do you want this thing to sort of, do you want to slice it this way? Or do we want to slice it this way?
Well, I'm not sure we should get to the point where we're so rigid that our budget is set up, we've allocated X number of dollars to a department, and it's a percentage basis. So that is our priorities are on that percentage basis also. To me, that would not make a community. Because there's got to be some things that are, you know, almost not measurable. It helps make the community, but they've got to be in a plan somewhere.
Can you give an example?
Well, there's people, people say, well, why do we need the library or some parks? You know, for sake of discussion. Because that's low-hanging fruit to whack off in some, some budget.
Those have a measurable impact on a community.
Thank you.
Yeah. Extremely measurable.
So that's what I'm saying, some, those wouldn't be just based on the dollars we're able to allocate to them. Just from a community standpoint, I think they should be at a higher level.
Things we can't see, things we can't measure.
Just random thoughts.
Intangible, intangible. I love living here, how do we know?
My name and then, and then it's K, I don't mind me, I'll just babble along with it.
So Chris, you got one more?
Yeah. Last one that we found is very similar. So safe cities, goal one, objective nine, which says, plan for adequate staff for increasing calls for service, response time, and community growth. Well, calls for service is a phrase that's very specific. Like, you know, the library isn't staffing for calls for service. Then if you go to effective government, goal one, objective seven, says, establish personnel succession planning for executive and other key leadership positions throughout the organization. So where, there's a gap. Like, so fire is concerned about having enough staff to meet their service needs as the city grows. And police, maybe, I'm not sure who wrote that specific objective. And the city is concerned about planning for executive and key leadership positions transitioning, which is also important because you tend to lose a whole lot of institutional knowledge when those people leave. But apparently, nobody else is really thinking too much about staffing and succession planning at the, other than the executive level, right? Which is of course not true. I don't want that to be the quote. There just seems to be another gap. So like, there must be a way to acknowledge people and the important role of staffing. And I will say, if you had the chance to read every single department operational plan, which I have, which is wonderful reading, it's really, it is really good. Everybody put a lot of effort into it. Every single department talks about a couple of things. People, training, and managing their resources, basically. So there's like, there's just like, I mean, everybody's talking about it. People, training, resource management, maybe communication might be another one that's in there. So like, there's just these common things that all of us are working on, whether or not they appear in the strategic plan. So we, which indicates to me that we need to figure out a better way to describe as a city what our goal is for managing our human capital.
I mean, we could just want, plan for adequate staff and establish personnel succession planning for executive and key leadership positions throughout the organization. Put that on there, then we're also planning for adequate staff, right?
Yep. Excellent. Excellent note. Gold star.
I didn't know we were getting stars.
Yeah, so that's, that's sort of the, I mean, there, I'm sure there are other things in here that are like, yeah, I don't know if there's, you know, grouped correctly. Do we have too much? Like, like goal one under effective government has, how, how many of the, like fifteen objectives? That's crazy. So maybe, you know, we want to try to be a little more concise next time. But one other thing I'll just point out on effective government, goal one, right? I don't know which one. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, maybe we want a number, our objective. It says, develop a full stormwater management program and identify a stable funding strategy for stormwater utility functions. That one can come out. So, I mean, that's been probably an objective for twenty years. It's been there for a long time.
Gold star.
Uh, yeah. It's been, I don't even know how to celebrate at this point. Yeah, so we have the utility and we have SDCs was the last thing. So we'll make a note, and then we'll leave the addendum, and it'll be removed next time.
Chris, you mentioned early on, you would look at other, other cities and how they were doing some of those things. Did you note any protocol best practices or anything that might say, well, hey, that's, that's a great idea as a way to possibly?
Yeah. Well, I totally stole the annual report format from City of Raleigh, which is a really good plan if you're into this sort of thing. And I think that it's, I would say that it's worth looking into some more, especially as we're talking about how to sort of summarize and group the work, you know, across the themes, through the departments. Like, how are we gonna do that? So something we should look into some more. But it really needs to, it also needs to work, you know, further. Whoever's on the council in '26 needs to make sense to that group of people. And, you know, it needs to be something that can be implemented and translated by the departments as well. So I think there's some more work to be done on that. Does anybody else have any concerns, comments?
Oh, I have a note. So you were talking about great neighborhoods. How we don't necessarily have anything. We just have the one under there. But we do have recognize and support Albany's unique historical, historic character as a major cultural and force-oriented economic resource and before of healthy economy. We could potentially, that, it does specifically say as an economic resource, but.
Yeah.
About the historic, historic resource.
I think, I think that's probably a good example of what Councilor Smith was saying is how different things are sprinkled sort of throughout. And it's like a different angle of the same kind of thing. And I remember, I don't know if you all remember during the workshop, this, this, there was discussion around effective stewardship. What is effective stewardship? And that seems to be, to be something that's got to be agreed upon by the council. What does it mean to be effective stewards of our history and our historical resources? Culture, et cetera. So yeah, it's, I just think there's room for some work there, probably.
Just have a general comment. Having read through both of these documents a week and a half ago, I mean, I did make some notes, I want to talk about two, but it is apparent to me, and I think anybody who reads these intentionally, that running, running a city the size of Albany is not a simple thing. There, there's so much to it. People who criticize government, government in general, don't understand what all goes on here every day, twenty-four hours a day. It's complicated. And it's done thoughtfully and deliberately and all the time. I, I would like other people to read this and recognize that. That, that we don't just show up and say, well, that's what we do today. Let's change this, or, it, that just doesn't happen. There's a plan, and there are action steps, and they're accomplished. And the accomplishments in the annual report, that was pretty juicy reading to me. I was really impressed with what all we had done. And you, you think back, you just read through there, and you can relive most of the council meetings that we've been to in the last three and a half years and, and before that. But still, it's those things that we, we've voted to say, look, let's do this. Let's start that, let's stop that, let's accept this. It gets done, and it's there, and we have a record of it. So it's, I'm so glad that this has been done going way back when I didn't even understand what we were doing. And now I see it, and it's, there's more, there's more to driving than putting gas in the car. You have to have a plan for where you're going to go, what you're going to do when you get there. And that's what we're doing here. Now, if you would like to hear my list, it's simple, it's just simple, but here we go. And I'm not going to holler all the time, I will pause till that people comment. Under great neighborhoods, on page twelve of the strategic plan, goal number one, facilitate neighborhood beautification efforts to improve safety and engagement in our neighborhoods. I'm not aware of anything being, specifically being done towards beautification, but.
They're giving a hoot.
Okay. Bingo.
And our department's support of that.
Would have loved to see painted intersections, but.
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Paint it, yes. Would love to see like painted intersections and adding smart.
Okay.
Goal number two.
Mary, before you move on, just, it's important to note that the verb there is facilitate.
Yes.
So, you know, while we try to help, and Jay Sharp will help with landscaping, public works has helped, it's actually, the credit goes to Kristin DeForest and Bobby Williams, and all the volunteers who support that effort.
Thanks for saying the word volunteer. We get a lot of things done in Albany as a community because of volunteers. Government doesn't have to do everything, government shouldn't do everything. And I, we have our volunteer base that is unparalleled by lengthy experience.
Councilor Smith, can I? I wonder also, do you, how do you think the, the big pickup and those sorts of programs, would, do you think that that would fall under this?
And the adopt a park program.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Oh, yeah, the graffiti chaser.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. I don't know who manages, looks like Parks and Rec manages the graffiti removal.
Yeah.
Volunteers.
Those would be good things to call out in the next annual report.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
We're talking about tweaking things. The, back to goal number two under great neighborhoods, five, objective number five, seek additional sources of funding for street maintenance. We're, we're doing it, but I'd like it moved up somewhere in, in bold letters.
How is that different than address local street needs as funding allows? Oh, as funding, that, sorry, that's my note.
Oh, okay.
I want to talk about that one.
Yeah, and I, one thing I'll just note about this is, you know, we've put a lot of emphasis on additional local funding. It's what we've been talking about, or still working on. So I'll bring you back an update sometime soon. But we also are, there are other sources, you know, there, we, whenever we can and we think we have a, a good project, we apply for state or federal grant funding. So, you know, just put it in your mind somewhere that additional sources doesn't just mean a local street utility or gas tax. There are other sources, we just have to, you know, we have to have enough work done that we can compete for, for some of those other sources of funding. So this is, it's a short little objective, but it, there's a lot that goes into that because you can't just go apply for a street project if it hasn't been partially designed. You know, so it's, this means a whole lot more to our department than it probably appears.
That's helpful to have that explanation. Objective says, I don't know what the word is, but explore options for the future of the airport related to best use for the Albany community. And I know that's underway, but we get some information about that.
Oh, boy. Yes, so we are working on that. We need to come back and talk with the council about the work we've done to date. There's not a lot of good answers right now for the airport. It's, the operating budget, it's just, the expenses are growing much faster than the revenue. And so, you know, we have a path to get us through this biennium. We don't really have a path for the next biennium. So we're trying to figure out the best, the best thing to do to try to bring recommendations to the council about what to do with the airport. So we'll be coming back to talk to you about that. It's not an easy, it hasn't been easy trying to figure that out.
I'll take a break and let other people participate.
I had something on the, so back to goal two of great neighborhoods. Back to street funding. So utilize available street funding, maintain arterial and electric streets to a minimum fee, PCI of sixty. Do we want to, so instead of address local street needs as funding allows, because we are having the conversation, should we change that to say, establish a minimum PCI for local roads? And, and something about funding.
Yeah, so what you might say, so one of our next. Yeah, so, um, what you might say, so one of our next steps, so, two things, yes, it would be helpful if the council would establish a target PCI for local streets, which we agreed to, um, in one council meeting to try to shoot for sixty for all streets, including local streets. And so that would be helpful if a counselor wants to make sure that that gets into the.
I would like to make sure that gets in there.
So, um, and, and then, uh, and then your second part was about using funding. I think what might be.
Sources of funding for, you know, you've got seek additional sources of funding for street maintenance. We, I don't know how to word like, figure out how to fund that and figure out how to fund it.
Establish a local PCI of, uh, establish a PCI of sixty for local streets and figure out how to pay for it.
Something along those. Figure it out.
Well, I mean, so it's interesting because I think we all, um, wanna, if it just said establish a PCI of sixty for local streets, the figure out how to pay for it is implied in my mind, like.
Okay.
Council wants us to have a sixty PCI for local streets, so we're gonna come and talk to the council about funding for local streets until we can get that.
Yeah.
Till we can achieve that. But, um, you know, it's, it's fine to include, continue to figure out how to pay for that, um, in there.
Some of these are aspirational goals.
They are, I mean, you know.
Like you said, it might be on there for a while, but.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jackie that it would kind of, uh, marry, or I guess mirror other goals we have, like for the goal number four, um, we have seek new funding to support library services. We could add that for those roads, like seek new funding or, or allocate funding, just makes, making sure everything's mirrored. So a few things, so looking at goal number four as well, um, it seemed a little bit like lip service, that it doesn't, I feel like there isn't really a, um, like the, the wording here, increase the number of cultural events as resources permit. You know, it does, that doesn't seem like it's really a priority as resources permit, you know, it's, either we want to provide those or we don't. And so maybe we should like set it as like a numerical goal, like, hey, like have one or two or at least or minimum. And then I also felt that, you know, having the goal, so I feel like these four items don't all work together. Maybe it's just me, but that provide diverse recreational, educational and cultural opportunities that enrich the lives of our citizens. You're looking at increasing circulated items at Albany Public Library. How is that, is, are we saying we want circulated items, are we, what kind of circulated items? Are we wanting to, you know, increase, you know, our readership for our young, young adults, our, our young children? And, and through what means, would it be like, you know, we want to have a mobile library that can go to some areas that can, where kids can pick up and, and return books that way? Or, um, then also the, the seek new funding for support library services. I feel like those almost, I feel like the library should be its own goal, own goal, the impact it has on our, on our city.
Yeah, so, um, almost all of the things that you said are excellent things for the revision of the strategic plan because they would need to be, like, if we had a new goal that was library focused, um, that would be fine. If the council wants to discuss that the next time and then you can have specific things under there about, you know, the very specific objectives you want the library to accomplish. It's a little bit, it would be a little bit funky because, um, well, I don't know. I don't know that we have a lot of other examples where there are goals that are, you know, specifically targeting one department, maybe in Safe City we do, I'd have to look. But that's definitely something to know.
Does do cultural events and fun things there as well, but so is it, is this.
Cultural events aren't just.
Isn't just the library.
Yeah.
So it feels like there's some, some weirdness.
Some is misaligned.
Yeah.
Well, and so you can't see, but I have these little notes all over. And, um, so I went through and identified which department is addressing which objective in their department operational plan. And so, um, um, the, most of these, you know, clearly the library is the last two because it's about the library, but, um, for the opportunities for healthy living, recreation activities, now it's Parks, Park and Rec, library, and I put Public Works, although I can't remember why. And I don't remember what we do, I'm sure we do something. And then, um, your note about increased circulated items seems a little too broad. So like, that might be something to also discuss with, um, the library director about, he might have in mind a specific type of circulated item.
So I would offer that, remember that you're providing broad, you are providing broad guidance. So we do have a library director and we actually have a library commission as well who weigh in on these things. We have a Parks and Recreation Director, Parks and Recreation Commission that weigh in on various activities and, and circulation of materials. I think, I don't remember exactly when this was established, but I think that the library's funding source for circulatory materials has always, it's actually been zeroed out. So that's, that's where this is going, is, hey, we, we want to support it more. Now, what particular kinds of items are selected? And there are pros in the library that, that look at that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it might be a little bit, um, it might be a little too much to try to be super directive from the council's position because the, um, you know, this is a five-year plan and, you know, there's, there might be some new-fangled use of libraries, like a tool library that may not have been anticipated years ago. So, um, you know, more broad language about, um, you know, how the library can support.
Literacy.
Like various needs of the community, various lending needs of the community, not just books. You're not just gonna go to the library and get a book. You know, they have the arts thing, they have the kids, they have the maker table, they have, you know, like all this great stuff that they came up with as a group. And so how can the council craft a goal or objective to like further encourage that creativity and benefit to the community? It's kind of the, kind of language that's in here, but, so.
I just don't wanna micromanage.
Right.
Think they do a good job, let's just give a broad goal and trust that they will do whatever.
I think with that whole increased circulated items, I get, yeah, that's just sound kind of, um, how do I wanna say? Like, let's just put it here, like it's a space holder or something that doesn't, I, I, I see where Counselor Newton is coming from. So, I mean, if it's, if it's not gonna add any meat to it, then maybe it should be taken out or, you know, I mean, all together.
That's what circulation and readership, you know, or.
Yeah, moving on, but, and I get where, you know, we don't wanna obviously micromanage, but I like something about like increased literacy or something like that because it does do all of these things. So maybe something that's broad, but gives a little specificity or a little bit more guidance, but increased circulated items just seems a little generic.
Yeah, and I will, I am almost a hundred percent sure that that is a metric that the ICMA wants you to report on. So that's.
And one of those.
Yes, yeah, so that may have been where that came from originally. But I think libraries have evolved to be so much more.
I agree.
And so maybe there's a way we can capture this note to try to further sort of have the library department flesh out like how they can best, you know, meet the needs of the community.
Sure, the ten cents.
Yeah. Okay. That's helpful. I mean, it's helpful for the library.
It's helpful for anybody that got something that's similar to that, when you, they can do better. That's what that's helpful for.
I had a note on healthy economy goal four, page twelve, page seventeen.
Thank you.
Re- last objective, it says, increase residential density in the downtown core. Could we, or should we add climate-friendly area in there too? In the, I don't think we chose that, the goal was, what was the downtown core?
We avoided that one.
Yeah, I think we're.
Well, I think you, and I would invite Matthew to speak, but, um, increasing density in the downtown core is more like contributing to, uh, density overall in the city. The climate-friendly areas are selected, areas that are, uh, put us in compliance with the climate-friendly and equitable communities. So there's no reason why they should be more dense than any other part of the city. The downtown core is more like, um, well, you're trying to make progress towards, um, walkability and progress towards being able, maybe to il- eliminate some amount of vehicles.
But that's also our goal.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe the thing should be to, as the note and the document should be to work in CFAs into the next strategic plan, whether it's, is it density or, or what? And again, I'd invite Matthew.
I think, um, the other thing to keep in mind is that the goal itself is talking about creating a unique downtown core, it's vibrant, has a mixture of things, and so.
As the goal says downtown core.
So I think that's why residential density is, is identified here as part of that vibrant downtown. You need to have people living there is, would help contribute to that. So I think that's how that wound up there.
Yeah, I would like to see us maybe revise that to add the climate-friendly areas to that kind of overall goal.
I think that when you, when you go through the process of building the next strategic plan, you'll, that CFAs will come up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so environmental or climate-related, um, goals are, there are a couple that pop up here and there, sort of like we were discussing earlier. There's something in here about, um, something in here, else in here about, um, climate resiliency or something. So it's probably, that's probably maybe another area where we, we try to.
Add some of those goals into the.
Yeah, and wherever that is.
Working on those anyway. Do we have a goal or, or sub-goal, I guess, that is related to ridership on the bus or, um, utilizing, uh, public transportation or cycling?
It's under goal two. Goal two of Great Neighborhoods says, provide an efficient transportation system with safe streets and alternative modes of transportation. And one of these is about transit.
Who's the last?
Oh, yeah, it's on the other page, it's on page, what page is this? Thirteen, um, about updated transit routes, monitor ridership trends and stuff. So we have done that and we are monitoring all of that, so that will be in annual reporting.
Which implies that it's, won't be long and you'll be able to just take it off the list.
Hopefully. I mean, you might be, it might be able to be modified because we have updated the transit routes and we are monitoring this data. And so then it might be, the council might say, it's been so successful, let's do more.
Yeah, and have, have more, more bike, bikeways or.
Yeah, so.
Protected bike paths.
Yeah, I don't see bike or, um, alternative, they call it alternative transportation in the transportation world. They have to have their language for everything. But we might make a note to try to include bike pad facilities.
It'd be really cool if we had like a few, if you, and this is like, you know, a decade ago when I was in college in Salt Lake, um, where you would have the, they had like the bike, where you could put your bike up and pump up the tires or do the maintenance or.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it encouraged people to cycle, then also to maintain their bikes and if we had a few of those sprinkled around, it'd be cool. I don't know, that's also a little granular, but yeah, increasing, increasing our, uh, people getting around not just using a vehicle all the time.
Other things that you all think that we are doing enough of, too much of, maybe not enough of?
I had a question about the bridge.
Oh, the bridge, the additional bridge?
Oh, yeah, is that even possible?
That's the question.
Okay, so let me give you like the, it is in.
Yeah, I saw it.
The.
Achievable, like this is the word I should, I know everything's possible within the prison.
And it is, you're gonna tell you, anything's possible.
Correct.
I think it is, um, if it is going to be done, it's not going to happen in the city.
Yeah.
So probably, and it does exist as an aspirational project in the MPO's twenty-year regional transportation plan. Which down here, it, there's an objective about being a cooperati- cooperative partner of the AMPO. And that's, that seems like a nothing objective. That's very important because the only way you're gonna get funding for big projects like that is through those types of cooperative groups, regional groups. So is it feasible? The city will not build a bridge across the Alamo River, I would say, with, I feel like I could say that with certainty. But the city needs to be a partner.
With someone.
In trying to get momentum around a bridge, you know, when that becomes an absolute.
That's literally like my dream though, is like have a bridge from like the Monte Park to a cross and then I could like easily walk to like IGA and not have to go like selfishly. I'm like, man, I wish there was a bridge, I could just like go there, ride my bike, pedestrian bridge, go to the grocery store easily. Great, pipe dreams here, pipe dreams.
I mean, so what I will say is.
I know, one day I'll be rich, right?
Related, um, work effort that's probably not in this, anywhere in the strategic plan is the transportation system plan update, right? Which we're just about to start and the Highway Twenty corridor study, not in here. And one of the results of the Highway Twenty study, you might remember the consultants who showed the modeling. If we can improve the bike pad system to get people onto and across Lion Street safely, we should be able to improve that access for people, so they might do that.
Yeah.
So they might have a, an easier way to get across that bridge rather than driving a car and getting stuck in traffic.
Yeah.
So, you know, if the council's like, it, it would be great to have an objective that says something like, improve multi-modal or alternative transportation access across the existing bridge infrastructure or something like that, as a way to kind of get around building a bridge. We're, the city is not gonna build a bridge, I just can tell you. But what can we do with what we have to make that existing infrastructure work better?
We could just add multi-modal wording to the first objective there on under goal two.
Oh, so add like bike or alternate?
Yeah, save pedestrian and multi-modal network, creating walkable and bikeable neighborhoods.
Yeah. That's a good one. So, I mean, I think that second objective is fine because it will take regional partners to evaluate the feasibility of a bridge. It's, and the, just to tell you, what's currently in the plan is, it, the concept is a bridge, sort of like they just sort of drop bridges along the river somewhere and look and see where it makes sense. And the, the current one in the plan is somewhere out in Benton County that connects, I forget what road in the county, over to Concert Road in Millersburg. This is where it landed, that's where it landed in the plan. City of Albany hasn't had any control over any of that.
We, we did, we did write a joint letter that we signed on to by Millersburg and Lynn County and Adair Village about four years ago.
Yeah.
But there were others jurisdictions that were actually opposed to it.
Yep.
For various reasons, so.
That's too bad.
And it, and it, and it really is a regional, the cost of a bridge is phenomenal. And there's a lot more demands on ODOT's budget than.
My father was talking about that thirty, forty years.
My father was talking about that thirty, forty years ago. And had we done it then, can you imagine how much easier it would be getting from Benton County, going to Albany?
And it's not just a question of ease, it's also from an emergency preparedness perspective. Those bridges, there's really effectively only one bridge, even though there's two because they're different directions. And if, if that collapses and, and you've isolated, you think about the, the.
I think about it.
It'll take something like that to collapse or disaster before we probably get a bridge.
And meanwhile, Adair Village is growing like crazy.
It is.
Well, what a depressing conversation.
Sorry to bring that up.
Just reality.
I was just like, what? A bridge?
Interestingly, the fallout from that letter that we wrote is the Highway Twenty study. That was kind of the compromise.
Accomplished something then.
They would do something, try to help the congestion problem.
What can be done in the meantime?
It's accomplished.
So, uh, I have a question. I'm unsure if we've already covered this before. I apologize, but how often do we review our SDCs and our, like our city services fees? Is that like a, on a audit schedule or, I don't, I, I just don't know.
You mean to change the, the rate?
Yeah, to look at rates and structure.
Um, so SDCs are annually, we adjust them with the, um, construction index.
Okay. Oh, that's right. Yeah.
The city services fee wasn't adopted with any, um, automatic, um, increase or anything like that. I don't know if Peter and Gina are looking at that. And then as far as the methodology that sets the SDC, that really only changes with master planning or some other significant change in the utility. So for instance, we're doing the water master plan right now. It's almost done. It might result in a change in the SDC. It definitely is going to change the project list that the SDC is calculated from. So any changes that we recommend to the methodology of the water, SDC will come to the council based on the master plan results. So that's what happens with parks recently too.
As you update your master plan, then you look at your methodology and then on an annual basis, you look at the.
The actual dollar amount. Yeah.
The fee structure. Okay. And then we're working on city services fee, audit schedule.
Well, it's, it's, what you're talking about is should, when should it be increased? Or can it be kept at the same level? There was a point in time where the council was really hopeful that we could lower it.
Yeah.
But if you read about the property tax, uh, in, in equity, not in equities, but the, the structural problems with the property tax system in Oregon, set at three percent. You really, I mean, you, you are perpetually looking for alternate sources of revenue because it, otherwise you're just going down, 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 down.
But we both have a review scheduled for that?
Well, yeah, I mean, it does really, effectively the schedule is every time the budget is, is created, you have to look at that as a, as a possibility. This last budget cycle, we didn't raise the city service fee. We kept it at the nine dollars that it was two years before that. So if you think, given the inflation over the last three years or so, the nine dollars that was started in, uh, two thousand twenty-one is, gets you about eight dollars worth of stuff today.
The planning, is that, that's not something, so you, you kind of mentioned putting the TSP in here, but are those master planning activities something we even want in the strategic plan or is that just daily work activities?
You know, I would, it's up to you, your strategic plan. Um, I think that if you want something like that in the plan or, or something like you're, what you're getting at is effectively managing our revenue resources, right? And then there would need to be, I think that would be sort of the level where you want to suggest like maybe there's a, a goal for the next, um, version of the plan where to talk about how to most effectively, you know, optimize our revenue resources, including, and then underneath that might be review the master plans and, and underlying SDC methodologies, you know. Bring, you know, rate increases, you know, whatever. That, that's a little specific.
Like trying to define effective stewardship.
Yeah. It's, um.
That's where it would go if we had something like that. That's.
Yeah. You know, we have, and this is probably true for every department. There are standards for, um, best management practices or whatever you want to call them for every field that we have here and for public utilities, there's a, this best management practice is to update your master plans at least on a ten-year basis. And we sometimes miss that. And sometimes it's fine because there hasn't been enough change in the community that you really need to redo your sewer plan. If it still works for you, then it still works. But, um, you know, that's typically the accepted best practice. There's probably examples of that throughout the department. So you don't really, we don't really need the council to research those and tell us those things. But if you do want to say something like, that would fall under like, um, you know, effectively manage your resources and things like that. It's definitely part of maintaining the utility is updating your master plan. So we would just know that that's under there. You might not know that that's under there.
We have a family of plans, a lot of plans.
There's a lot of plans.
This one is the big one on top.
And for the skeptics, the plans are used. They're not sitting on the shelf. We use them.
I can look right there and see Bailey's very used copy of the strategic plan.
Well, it's my project, my special project. Yeah, I mean, I think every department has, the, the best plans are the ones that the departments build themselves, I would say. You know, so I would, probably everybody back there could say, oh yeah, we worked on, um, you know, a cybersecurity plan. IT department, I'm sure has that, you know, or we worked on a master plan. You know, we recognize the importance of that and, and do that, you know, internally. So all of those things, when a plan is forced upon you, is not, usually not effective. But you can talk to everybody, they could like be happy to share with you all of their favorite plans that they have, that they're working from. Yeah.
Councilors have other comments or questions? Bailey, you have any closing remarks?
Well, so we're going to, hopefully Mary, Mary got all that. We're going to work on the draft addendum, um, based on your notes. And so probably what you'll see from this is at a future relatively soon work session is an addendum and then a parking lot list for the two thousand twenty-six revision. And, um, you know, get your input and comments on those. Make sure we capture your thoughts correctly. In the meantime, if you have things that occur to you as you're reading your annual report at home in your spare time, please feel free to give me a call and, um, we can note what you might see and try to make the process and the products better.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your input. It's been a good discussion.
Yes, thank you.
Move to the next and the next item on the agenda, which is business from the council. So with Councilwoman McGee.
I have none tonight. I'll reserve for Wednesday.
Councilwoman Oviedo?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Councilor Kocinski.
Did have a constituent call me this afternoon, actually. Some issues with Zipley, uh, parking in his driveway. Not any thing that they did, that he didn't mention anything, anything they did in his yard or anything. Parked in his driveway for four days.
For four days?
He said he left a note on the, he left a note on the windshield.
Was he able to get in and out of his garage or?
He was, he was. So.
Did he, did he, uh, file a complaint with Zipley?
He said he was going to, but he said he did call, uh, police departments and they can't do anything about it. So you can't just park on private property. He said, that's a business, you're going to have to talk to the business. He said the truck was not, um, marked that it said Zipley or anything like that, but he said he could tell that's what they were doing. So on Hill Street somewhere.
Want to make sure that Zipley gets all those complaints.
If you can send that to me, if you have any information or the contact, and then I'll make sure that we get that to Zipley.
I'll check and see if it's still on Star Sixty.
If not, it's okay. But if you do have it, we'll pass it on.
Before we leave that topic, I'll just comment that I'm, I was, I was happy to see the addition to the homepage, city's homepage with got a problem with Zipley, call them, they can take care of it.
I'm glad you said that.
It's right on the homepage. It's right in the face. Councilor Mundy?
I do have something and I'm sorry if this is your something for Wednesday. I, uh, was able to attend the NWA CP's Black History Month, um, forum. They had a, uh, panel. It was, uh, Black Women in Law and Politics. They had a panel discussion. Um, and, uh, uh, Councilor McGee was one of the panel, panelists. And, um, it was fantastic. I had a great time and I thought, Councilor McGee represented the city very well and, um, I was very proud of her and, and it was, it was a cool event and I was, uh, telling Marilyn that it was at the, um, Corvallis Museum and it's a very nice museum. Um, and, but she was recommending that I go check out the new, uh, newly remodeled Albany Regional Museum. I haven't been there since they remodeled, so that is now on my to-do list. Have to do that. But thank you for, uh, posting that so I could attend and know that it was happening and I had a great time. Thank you for coming.
Councilor D.
I have nothing for tonight. I'll just share an update, uh, on Wednesday.
Okay. I have nothing for tonight either.
The only thing I have for you is if, if you are, if any of you are interested in attending the distinguished service award dinner of the Chamber of Commerce, let me know or marry and we'll, uh, we'll get you set up to go to.
When is it?
March ninth.
We would have to know right away because we have to give numbers. Right. You're going. I'm, I'll be jacking stuff. Let you know you have to check, see any schedules.
Please let me know right away.
Is there any other business for the council this evening, this afternoon, this evening? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned at five twenty-two.
Counselors, council. And well done to you.
Thank you always. Thank you.
Good.